Ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30. I will call the August 1st meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Ben Sickle.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney has excused Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern.
Here.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Here.
And Counselor Levine.
Thanks to our clerk for ensuring that the temperature is appropriately comfortable. We have a quorum. Approval of the minutes from July 18th, 2017. Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, the second by Counselor Fennessy to approve the minutes. Discussion. See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries.
Item 5.1 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to amend and approve the 2017 Action Plan Budget authorizing staff to submit plan to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Most approved.
We need to have a public hearing first.
So the public hearing is hereby open. Would anybody like to speak on the public hearing? Would anybody like to speak on the public hearing? Final call. Would anybody like to speak on the public hearing? See none. The public hearing is now closed. We will entertain a motion.
All move.
Second.
The motion to approve is by Counselor Bender, second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 6 is the consent agenda.
Let's poll 6-2, please.
Item 6.2 is polled. What is your pleasure with item 6.2?
My pleasure is to say, well, first I'll make a motion to approve 6.2.
Sir, second.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second is by Counselor Olson. Violence not being permitted on the council floor.
If I could clarify, actually, you're just receiving and filing those minutes?
Okay, if it's only receiving and filing, then I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So the motion, then, you don't need to poll this?
No, we do not.
This is just a receiving and filing?
Yep, just a receiving and filing.
Is there objection to moving back to the full consent agenda?
There is none on my part.
Then the consent agenda in total. What is your pleasure?
Most approved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elm to approve the full consent agenda. Is there discussion? Did you have a question about that item, Counselor Bender?
Well, yes, I did, because I did try to call in, and I called Jenny, and she wasn't here. I called Dan, she wasn't here. I called Craig, and he was here and said that Terry would call me eventually. And this was starting at 5:30 PM in Guatemala. I was in Guatemala City, but it never did happen. So I just want the record to show that I tried.
That was for the July 18th regular meeting, not the committee of the whole. And if you notice on the minutes from July 18th, I did make a note to that effect.
Well, the other thing was, the CDB meeting on July 18th, I did not receive notice in advance that that was happening. So I was listed as being absent, but I should have missed it as excused.
Noted. Thank you. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 7 is standing committee recommendations. 7.1 is the Finance Committee recommendations from July 13th. Just to note that item 3 was the amended lease for Sailboats, Inc., and that was approved at our July meeting.
Before we entertain a motion, we have a representative from Zagster here that is set to speak later on the agenda. I would entertain a motion now, if you want to hear that presentation now, to suspend the rules to allow the presentation to happen now.
I vote suspended.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second is by Counselor Fennessy?
I think.
Counselor Kern?
Mm-hmm.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Kern to suspend the rules. Is there objection? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Rules are suspended. We are moving forward with the presentation from Zagster, Mr. Daniel. Well, why don't you spell your entire name into the microphone for the record, please?
I'm just trying to...
The little mouth is speaking. The third button.
Got it. Daniel Petkanas, spelled P-E-T-K-A-N-A-S, is in Sam. I want to thank Mayor Payne for having me here. We've been working over the last few months with Linda and Parks as well to design and implement a bike share program here in Superior. I've been lucky enough to speak with a few council members that have reached out themselves with questions. So we thought it made sense to do sort of an overview of Zagster, how we're a little bit different from others in the industry, and sort of what we're thinking here in Superior, and then open it up to questions at the end. Perfect. There we go. So, to start, we wanted to really highlight the differences in the bike share industry. So on the left here, you see the traditional kiosk-based bike share program. So that includes a docking station where all of the technology is integrated into that dock. There's a large wayfinding map that handles all of the credit card processing. So it's very infrastructure-heavy. It requires electricity. It requires cellular and internet to handle the payment processing. The bikes themselves, you'll see, are very large because they were designed to be used in more dense cities like Minneapolis or Chicago. So they're very heavy bikes to make the rider feel safe while they're on the bike. What Zagster's done differently is we've integrated the lock onto the bike itself, so our stations are very much less infrastructure-heavy. They don't require any electricity or anything like that at all. They're much more accessible for the users. Because the lock's on the bike itself, it allows the user to lock the bike up mid-trip. So for example, somebody can take a bike from a Zagster station, ride to the supermarket, they're able to lock the bike up to any public bike rack or pole, do their shopping, come out, unlock the bike, and return it back to a Zagster station. So by having the locking technology on the bike itself versus on the docking stations allows it to be flexible in the community. So here's a Zagster station and a Zagster bike. You'll see the stations are essentially just branded pieces of metal, so people know where to pick up and return the bikes. The wayfinding stations just provide information on how to sign up as a member and how to access the program. The Zagster bike is a Fuji Cruiser that's been modified to have bike share accessories on it, so the lock is built onto the back tire. There's the basket up front that offers sponsorship opportunities. It includes an automatic front and rear light and a fully adjustable seat to fit anybody from 4.8 through 6.5. And again, to really drive down the cost of the program overall, we do all of our payment processing through the app itself. So a user, once they're signed up to use the program, is able to unlock a bike in under 10 seconds. Tying into this as well, if a user does not have a smartphone, they still have access to the bike share program. They simply need to sign up on the Zagster website beforehand, and they can use a flip phone or SMS text messaging to send a text message to unlock the bike. So it's accessible to everybody. We've had quite a few questions about comparable bike share programs that Zagster has launched. As an overview, Zagster operates 180 bike share programs. About 100 of those are municipal-based programs, 40 are university-based programs, and another 40 are corporate campuses or residential properties. We've really broken this down into two different subsets. The first is really just comparable population, income, and median age. So Valparaiso, Carrollton, Rome, and Port Huron all have bike share programs ranging from 20 bikes to 50 bikes, and that's simply based on the demand that we saw in the city. We've also broken it down based on climate, because that's been a question that's come up repeatedly. We're based in Boston, so obviously our first expansions were in the Northeast. We've operated in New York, in New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, and we have a bike share program in Canada as well. So we're confident that we'd be able to operate a program all 12 months if necessary, or only during the fall, spring, and summer months, depending on what the city desires. So what Zagster does a little differently than others in the industry, the typical bike share program required a capital investment to purchase the stations and purchase the bikes. The city then had to decide if they wanted to have somebody on staff run that program, or if they wanted to sign a second operating contract with the bike share operator to manage the day-to-day. What Zagster has done is we do a full-service leasing model. So for one annual price, everything from A to Z involved in a bike share program is handled by Zagster. So we help find the funding, whether through public, whether through grants, whether through private sponsorship opportunities. We help with all the legwork there. From there, we design and plan a program where we think users are going to resonate with the use cases. So we want to see eyeballs on the bikes. We want to see the bikes getting used, and we want to see use cases that we think will happen in the city, be it parks and trails, or connecting a university to the downtown area. From there, Zagster owns all of the hardware, so we work with a local contractor to install the stations. We work with a local contractor to build the bikes, and then we handle all of the technology, including on the bike, on the website, and on the app to upgrade it. From there, we handle 24/7, 365 rider support through our app and through a 24/7 call center. So there's no additional support needed locally from staff to educate or deal with any issues. Additionally, we will contract with a local independent contractor who will maintain the bikes on a regular basis, as well as deal with any repairs when a user reports a flat tire, chain off, missing seat, whatever it may be. And then lastly, we provide promotional support to help raise awareness around the program. So what we do is we have press releases. We have digital and physical marketing ads that we're able to use with the city to help promote the awareness of the program. And the keys to a successful program are really, there's really three steps. One, it's identifying the proper locations so that we get good usage and good awareness and good eyeballs on the bikes and on the stations. Second is designing the right types of membership options so that we hit a broad range of users. So what we typically recommend are three different membership options. One annual option, that's low-cost, $20 to $30 annually, will give you access to the program, and every ride under one hour will be free. So for residents here in Superior, for $30, they have access to a bike. They can use it every day for 45 minutes, and they never pay another dollar into the system. We recommend as well a student option that's less expensive as well to make sure that the students are using Bike Share. Lastly, we recommend a shorter, higher price for a monthly membership for people visiting here. So that's a way to get some additional revenue in, maybe a $10 or $15 monthly membership for people who are just visiting. So we really want to hit the broad spectrum of users here to see that the bikes out on the streets and on the trails. And then lastly, our goal really here at Zagster is to make bikes accessible to everybody. So whether it be for sustainability, health and wellness, or just connecting with the community, people are using Zagster for everything. We did a recent rider survey, and 92% of riders agreed that Bike Share was a good investment for their community. I'll leave it with one last anecdote. We recently launched in Peoria, Illinois. We worked with the CDB there as the main partner, and our partner had launched many different initiatives, be it farmer's market, or music festival, or movies in the park, and there was always somebody in the community that would complain about parking, or congestion, or noise, or times, or location. She assumed the same thing would happen with Bike Share, and in the first month, she's heard nothing but positive feedback about a way that they were able to move Peoria forward by having something that nobody else around them has. That's all I have. I'll open it up to questions from here.
Questions? Counselor Bender, you'll want to use your light.
No. Is it the second one from the right?
Mark, are you trying to hear a microphone?
Yes, he's trying to figure it out.
Yes, I think it's this one. Anyway, we have new microphones, so we're technologically...
They're a little, they are confusing.
Yes, they are. But I wanted to ask, worldwide, what are the other similar programs?
So Zagster only operates in North America. Bike Share began in France. That was sort of where this industry took off. It came to North America first in Montreal, and from there, it's grown through all the major cities. Zagster really started focusing on universities and properties, and that's why we have a much less infrastructure-heavy type system, where the other ones were focused more in those dense cities. So our program is much more flexible than the more dense programs you see.
What is the breakdown on sponsorship amounts?
So sponsorship amounts are for a minimum of one station, which is nine, or five bikes. So it's $9,000 annually for a two-year commitment.
Okay. And you did mention about a local contractor will be in charge of the upkeep of the bikes?
Yep. Yeah, so we will either contract with a local bike shop. I understand there's none here in Superior, so it would be somebody from Duluth. Or if there is somebody locally that passes our certification, is semi-retired, and wants to be able to, and wants to work on the bikes, we're happy to do that as well. So we handle the sourcing all of that. If you have people you can think of, that...
I do.
There you go.
They'll also be sponsoring, and I will tell them tomorrow when I see them. Thank you.
Counselor Sutherland.
Just a few questions. Is it safe to say that you can call this a bike rental program as well as a bike share program?
I wouldn't necessarily call it a bike rental program. I mean, a bike rental program is for somebody who wants a bike for a day or two. Bike share program is they'll be able to pick it up at any station and return it to any other station within the network. So they don't have to return it to the same dock.
Okay.
Further question?
Technology, technologically, the base stations, are they battery-operated? What, how does that communicate? Do these need to be electrically wired?
So no electric to the stations at all. They're just pieces of metal that are drilled into the ground. The lock is low-energy Bluetooth. That's how it communicates with your phone to unlock. We get updates if the batteries need replacing. They last about two years, but our local mechanic would replace them.
That's all part of the contract, you maintain that?
No additional cost, no additional cost for replacement of bikes, parts, anything.
Thanks.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Counselor Olson.
I'm a little confused. Just kind of the conversation with that a sponsorship is $9,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in the Finance Committee, you're going to move forward at 100% sponsorship, which would be $9,000, but with zero funding from the city, how would you make that work?
It's $9,000 per station, per year, correct?
Yep. Yeah, so the annual cost for the entire program is $36,000. That's for 20 bikes, four stations.
In the minutes, it says to move forward at 100% sponsorship with zero funding from the city. How is the city going to sponsor at 100%? And it costs $9,000, and you're going to have zero funding from the city?
To clarify, Counselor, the sponsorship at first is private sponsorship. So it would move, we would be supporting the program but not funding it. The funding, as this is written, would come from private or corporate sponsors.
Okay, so we're going to just back whatever private sponsor wants to come forward?
That's what's on the agenda right now, yes.
Is there any reason why the city wouldn't want to have a little money in the game?
That'd be a question for the actual motion when we get to. We're still on questions for Zagster, though.
Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Fennessy?
Can you explain the bike locking mechanism? Because it's my understanding that it's unique to Zagster. Nobody, no other bike companies out there have anything like this, similar to this, or kind of along that same thought?
Yeah, so it's a ring lock around the back tire. So essentially, it's plastic with a metal tube in it. When the bike unlocks, the metal that's going through the spokes on the back tire pulls inside the frame of the lock, and that allows the back tire to spin.
Okay. And so the beauty of that is you can rent it, stop at the coffee shop, have a cup of coffee, it remains secure. So what do, what do other communities do who don't have Zagster? Does it just sit outside the...
Yeah, great question. So with the kiosk-based model where all the technology, all the locking technology is on the docking stations, they simply don't have the ability to stop mid-trip unless they have a bike lock on them. So the user would have to provide their own bike lock.
Or just leave it unlocked?
Or just leave it unlocked, yeah, and risk somebody taking it.
In the slide there, you said most of the other comparable-sized cities are doing 20 to 50 bikes?
Yep.
So with this program, this would be severely, you know, under, you know, the bikes would be much less than what the average city or size is doing, right?
No, 20 is what Valparaiso launched at. 20 is what, most of our programs launch with 20, and once they see the success, it grows from there. And what we deem success, it's not revenue generated from users, it's seeing bikes on the streets. It gives the city the ability to know where bikes are going, so where to invest in bike infrastructure. They're able to get real data from the users on that. We deem success, you know, we talk to a lot of cities where they're competing with a city that's 30 miles away, 45 miles away. Duluth's right across, you know, everybody can see Duluth, and you're competing with them. So if you can get students or residents that have friends in town that decide to take Zagster to ride through the parks, and then stay in Superior to spend their money, that's a win. That's what we view as a successful bike share program.
Okay, so looking at the footprint of our city, I mean, it's a big footprint, where they're proposed are pretty spread out.
Yep.
Would it be, would it be safe to say that it would be difficult to go from one spot, do your shopping, do your trail riding, whatever, and end at another hub?
No, I mean, they're all close enough together where people can easily ride from one to another. You can do comfortably six to 10 miles on a bike in an hour without having to go crazy on it. So we definitely think Superior can support more bikes, but we think 20 is a good number where people will see the success of the program. They'll see bikes getting used, and then we're able to, if it is successful, grow it or continue at the 20.
Okay. Thanks for coming, Daniel.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Kern.
Just kind of backing you up a little bit, when you were talking about that this program isn't funded through membership and daily rides fully. Are you able to speak anything on behalf of some of the other cities, kind of what they do bring in on an annual revenue?
So it's difficult to assess what the revenue generated will be, and that's simply because each of those cities have different membership options that are customized, and the free hourly times are different in each city. So what we see is that the majority of your users are going to be residents that sign up for the low-cost annual fee, and most of their rides are going to be under the one or two hours free. So they're not going to be putting a lot of money back into the system. So it's difficult to come up with a revenue-generated number on that. We typically see anywhere from 250 to 2,000 hours per month in those. So it does range drastically. Typically, we see the more bikes. So Carrollton, they have 50 bikes now, and they're seeing almost 2,000 hours of usage a month.
And that's $2,000 of payable hours in that community, or is that...
2,000 hours of usage, yeah. We don't, I don't know what their revenue...
I'm just trying to put some sort of a number to it, just for numbers.
Yeah, I would say each, you really don't want to look at Bike Share as a way to generate revenue, because if you do, you're going to, you're going to price out the people that don't have access to bikes. So you could make the annual membership $50, $60, $100. You're going to get more revenue, but you're just going to price out people that don't have access to the program anymore. Conservatively, I would say revenue would be like $400 to $600 a year per bike, you know, as a safe, as a safe bet.
That's all I was looking for. Thank you. Thanks for making the trip up here, too.
Yeah, glad to be here.
Great presentation.
Counselor Sutherland.
Just one more question for you. I heard you mention that you do help find sponsors, right?
Yep.
Have you been helping this whole time? We've been trying to bring it up, and if so, what have you brought to the table?
Yeah, so we have one sponsor committed for one station for two years already. They verbally committed. We've continued outreach with others that have been provided to me. We'll continue to, I'll continue to make that outreach to try and fund the program. That's what, that's what we're here to do. But we already have one station committed already from a local sponsor here.
All right, thank you very much.
Counselor Elm.
Walking through the transaction, if you're a new user, how difficult is that? Does it tie into Apple Pay, Google Wallet, or anything like that? Is there any easier way of doing that, or does that take 10 minutes to enter your credit card in there?
No, so you download the, if you have a smartphone and you're at the station, you download an app, you put in your first name, last name, and gender, and then you put in your billing information. So your billing zip code, your credit or debit card, and you're off. So it can be as quick as five minutes. Additionally, with that billing information, we're able to see who the users are, right? Because we have their billing zip code, we can identify if they're tourists, if they're students, if they're local residents that are using the Bike Share. And this is all data that we have, that we provide to the city to help them decide if this is a good program to invest in.
And generally, with those statistics, are they mostly tourists or local users?
It's really, it's really, it really depends on the Bike Share. So we have some, I'm not totally familiar with the specifics of each of those programs. Those really just fit in terms of, you know, population and size and income. We can design a program to point towards tourists. We can design a program to point towards residents or students. What we really want to see is just a broad range of users. So we want to have membership options for all different types of users.
Sure, thanks.
Further questions?
I think she's trying.
Mic on. Oh, there you go.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
No, I'm concerned about seniors. Are they going to be able to use these bikes?
That's a, that's a great question. Zagster is the only company that offers accessible bikes. So we also have trikes, we have tricycles, we have hand cycles. We have those all available as well, if you want to include those in the program.
Because I was considering training wheels for myself.
Yeah, we have, we have tricycles and everything. Yep.
Okay, okay, that answered my question. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming.
Counselor Fennessy?
If I could, just one last question. For tourists, there helmets or anything like that, or does a tourist just not...
Is there a helmet law here in Superior for 18-plus?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
No. I don't think it's in Wisconsin. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, so there's no, there's no helmets provided. The issue that the industry hasn't been able to figure out with helmets is if you provide a helmet and it's dropped and there's a crack in it, then that is compromised, and it's a huge liability issue. So no, the Bike Share industry has not been able to figure out a safe way to manage the helmet process, so it's on the user. The user signs a waiver with us. So Zagster's primary for the insurance. We have a $4 million insurance policy, and then each rider that signs up signs a waiver with us as well. So we additionally insure the city.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Further questions? Thank you very much, Daniel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more question. These metropolitan areas, I mean, these areas that you have as comparable cities, they're all within like under an hour of large metropolitan areas such as Chicago, Atlanta, and Detroit.
Sure.
How does that impact that, as Minneapolis being over, what, the two and a half hours away from our area, you know, does that affect anything in terms of income and usage?
No. We don't, we don't see it affecting it at all, because the users are people that are in those cities. They're not biking from Atlanta to Carrollton, or from Chicago to, you know, Valparaiso. So it's people that are living and working or visiting those cities. So we don't see, we don't see usage tied to the big cities at all.
Now, any further questions? Okay, now, thank you. Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Presentation concluded. We will return to normal order. We are on item 7, 7.1. Finance Committee, the, yes, the minutes of the Finance Committee, including Zagster. What is your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Bender. Counselor Ben Sickle.
Just, are we at discussion?
Yes.
Sorry, thanks. I also want to thank you for coming up, Daniel. It's no secret that I'm a huge fan and strongly in favor of active transportation and alternative modes of navigating and exploring this community. Also, a strong supporter of Zagster coming to Superior specifically. I think it's important that our residents, businesses, visitors are able to experience the city, moving away of our somewhat stagnant past and is responsive to its elections and demographics, both current and future. I also want to, like, just very honestly acknowledge that I know there's opposition and a lot of curiosity on this council, but I also consider a dynamic and vibrant council and asset, and the people of Superior have strong voices who care, and that's something that I also care about and deeply respect. But I also want to recognize that this was unanimously supported in Parks and Rec Committee, and there's strong support in this community for Zagster to come. And so because of this, I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion to the August 15th council meeting in order for the city of Superior to consider sponsorship of one Zagster bike station.
We have a motion to table until August 15th.
I will second that motion.
I will second that motion to table.
Sure, Counsel Van Sickle, I assume you mean just the Zagster portion of this, not the entire?
Correct, thank you.
So we have a motion by Counsel Van Sickle and a second by Counsel Bender to refer, to table the item seven point one, item five to August fifteenth to consider funding. Is that accurate?
Correct.
A discussion on the motion. Counsel Fennessey.
Why, I, I guess I'm confused why we would table this. I, I guess, I don't understand what, what that would be accomplishing. If we, if, if we want the city to consider sponsoring, why don't we just consider that today instead of just delaying? Or am I misunderstanding the, the motion maker's intent?
Well, I can't speak to her intent, but the motion would push the discussion on financing to August fifteenth, yes.
Correct.
You're correct. No, to the council, the motion is to the council.
Correct.
On August fifteenth, correct?
The August fifteenth meeting, yes.
Okay, Counsel Kern.
Can I make an amendment to the motion that we discuss it tonight?
So we can get this. Not to the, not to a motion to refer, you'd have to vote it down if you wanted to discuss it tonight. And if you wanted, and then you could entertain a motion to the main motion. An amendment to the main motion, sorry. We'll get through this. Further discussion on the motion to table. Counsel Van Sickle.
I guess I would just like to add to it in terms of the active, the active efforts that are happening around private sponsorship are positive. And I agree with Counselor Olson in terms of the city having some real stake in this. And, you know, originally we were talking about much bigger goals. And I think it is not unreasonable for this council to have some time in consideration around purchasing or sponsoring one station.
Further discussion. Seen none, reminder, this is a motion to table the Zagster issue to August fifteenth where we will consider funding. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no.
No.
The motion. We'll take a roll call.
Okay, the motion is to table to the August fifteenth meeting.
Your mic.
I thought it was on, I'm sorry. Motion is to table to the August fifteenth council meeting. Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Yes.
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney is excused. Counselor Fennessey.
No.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig.
No.
Counselor Sutherland.
No.
Counselor Kern.
No.
And Counselor Dahlbeck.
No.
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
We are on the main motion, item seven point one, the business of the Finance Committee. We have a motion and second to approve this, Counsel Fennessey.
We're, we're on the motion and second to approve it?
To approve the, the whole item seven point one as, as written, as it appears on the agenda.
Okay. I, I guess I'd like to, you know, at least have a conversation about it. I, I'm not, I'm on the Finance Committee. I was the one that made the motion to move forward with a hundred percent sponsorship funding, private sponsorship funding. I'm not opposed to the city, especially after the presentation tonight, maybe having a little bit of skin in the game, especially if it's coming from the Hotel Motel Fund. That's, you know, historically where we've used some money to maybe try, try out a new project, try out something. You know, sitting through the finance, I sat through the Parks and Rec Department. What we have to, what we have to realize with those two is there was the concept of it that was supported at the Parks and Rec. The, the financial side failed at the, at the Finance Meeting. But I would, I, I would be willing to, you know, support, you know, something like, like an eighty, twenty with the city maybe contributing twenty percent from the Hotel Motel and the rest, private, you know, sponsorship. Sounds like you guys are on the right track getting at least some movement. And although I don't see the benefit in this, I don't see the, the usage happening. If eighty percent of the private sector can come in and say, yeah, we want this, we want to back it, I guess there's obviously something that I'm missing. So if, you know, it was, I was on the Finance Committee and, you know, we made that motion to send it through with a hundred percent, but I would be willing to support going like an eighty, twenty or something like that.
Counsel Van Sickle.
That's great news to hear because one bike station is twenty-five percent. So we're very close in, in, in that, in that respect. I think just having some time would have been nice for our community and for this council to consider twenty-five percent.
Counselor Kern.
I, I agree that, I think the city, if we are going to be making some potential revenue, we're not unsure of. I, I do agree that we should have some vested interest in this. And, you know, to make things easier, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the twenty-five percent funding, just to make it clear. So it's one bike station and not try to go eighty. So that way, one of them's funded by the city.
Is there a second? The second, the motion is by Counsel Kern, a second by Ruth Ludwig to fund twenty-five percent of the Bike Share program, the intent being to cover one bike station. Okay, so the City of Superior will be sponsoring a bike station, is your motion, okay? Discussion on the motion, Counsel Fennessey.
Where would the, where would the money come from? The, the money that we bring in from this, the fifteen dollars a month, thirty dollars a month, whatever it ends up being? I assume that would go back to the city as it was stated in the original proposal?
That's, that's a fair question, but that'd be for, that'd be for the city to decide. We'd have to articulate those details.
That, that would be the, the city to decide or?
Yes.
So private sponsors get no access to the revenue share simply to fund that station? The city, the contract holder, maybe get the revenue accorded?
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Further discussion. Seen none. Before we vote on this, I would point out this, this does leave some details to figure out, but we'll bring separate details back to the council. Seen no further discussion.
Roll call vote.
We move to a roll call.
Okay, the motion is to fund twenty-five percent or one bike station sponsors, sponsorship from the city. Counselor Van Sickle.
Yes or no, please?
Yes. Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey, or I'm, I'm sorry, Counsel Sweeney is excused. Counselor Fennessey.
No.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig.
Yes.
Counselor Sutherland.
No.
Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
No.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That is the amendment to seven point one. Item seven point one as amended, has a motion and second. Further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item seven point two is the Public Works Committee recommendations from the July nineteenth meeting.
Motion is by Counsel Dahlbeck, the second by Counsel Bender. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say, those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Sorry, Dan, I'll wait for you.
Item eight point one, I am submitting miscellaneous approval, miscellaneous licenses for approval.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counsel Dahlbeck, the second by Counsel Bender. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
I'm also requesting approval of an application to amend a premise of a Class B liquor and beer license for the Cedar Lounge for a special event.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counsel Dahlbeck, the second by Counsel Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item eight point three, Planning Director Circa is requesting waiver of the bid procedure and awarding the contract for conducting wetland assessment in support of SAM program to S E H Inc. And there is a typo in that amount. It should be for seventy-three thousand twenty dollars.
With the corrected amount, is there a motion? Motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Eight point four, Finance Director Vito is requesting approval of the two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen adjustments to the capital improvement program and tentatively, tentatively approve the two thousand nineteen through twenty-two oil pipeline terminal tax to the general fund.
Motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Counselor Kern.
I was able to look through some of these projections that we're looking for the capital improvement fund. And I'm not sure which one I'm gonna pick on first, whether it's gonna be the mayor or Gene, so bear with me. We're looking, I, I believe back in February, we decided that we're gonna start using terminal tax money to fund our general fund, correct?
There was a meeting, it was a council retreat. And we discussed that where, I think it was probably over a year ago, where we said, are you, was the council at the time okay with using some of that pipeline terminal tax to help out with the general fund? And so the, the direction at that time was yes, go ahead and do that. So now the first year that that would actually affect would be the twenty eighteen budget, correct?
All right. With that being said, I, I do remember that conversation and where we're at with that. But we're now in a new budget process where we're prioritizing our budgets and we're looking at trying to balance our budget. I guess I have a little bit of a problem now looking at spending in the next five years tentatively seven million dollars of anticipated money. We, we've seen this in the past where some of these accounts that we have have actually gone down. Coal, for an example, I believe grain and some of the rail have also gone down. Are we setting ourselves up for complete disaster looking at two thousand twenty-two by doing two point two million dollars of potential revenue? And also another two hundred thousand dollars from the CIP? That's kind of been talked about being on the chopping block. I mean, I'll, to me, it just seems like we're putting a Band-Aid on something. We're not really fixing the initial budget problem.
So to be fair, maybe Gene, you can back this up a little bit. This, the subsequent years, you're right that do rely on a great deal of projected revenue from the oil terminal tax. But this realistically only relates to twenty eighteen. I don't mean to just totally kick that can, that problem down the road. What, what you're saying is true. I, I think it's fair to say that it won't be zero revenue, but those amounts do flux. And so we have to make adjustments on a year by year basis based on what the actual numbers are. So the fact of the matter is, we do have oil terminal tax revenue for twenty eighteen. So this is considering in advance of the full budget, general fund budget that I submit to you, what we should do with that money. Gene, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good explanation. And to kind of follow up on what the mayor is saying, we're looking at a one-year formal approval of this. And then everything we're seeking is tentative after twenty nineteen or twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. And so if for, for, to your point, Counselor, if this revenue source was to decrease, I think you do have a decent amount of notice that, okay, we wouldn't then commit to twenty nineteen that much terminal tax money being available if it was to decrease, say, to three million instead of the four point two million. And just, just as an FYI, the estimates that we have in the CIP, I've increased them by two percent each year. That's far, far below what they actually have increased. They were, just only a few years ago, this source of revenue was at two point some million dollars. And we had just enormous increases. One year was thirty-four percent, one year was probably forty some percent. Those increases have gone down. They're not that large going from year to year. But I kept it pretty conservative, you know, only bumping it up two percent, not saying, oh, I think we're gonna keep getting fifteen, twenty percent more every single year. So I, I don't anticipate, I don't see anything in the, in this period of time that would give me a heads up that that terminal tax money should go down because it's based on the value of those, all those new tanks that they built very recently. And I, I believe Enbridge still is doing some work at the terminal that will increase the value of that. So I don't see it decreasing anytime soon.
As long as this is tentatively just for this year, like you guys have said, I guess I have no problem with the four hundred thousand this year. But as long as it's being reviewed every year, I just don't want to get caught in a trap where we're overspending on the CIP, which we're setting aside. That is supposed to be, I believe, rules that is supposed to have a five-year value, isn't it? Five or ten years, is that correct?
The CIP?
Yeah, when we purchase something out of there over ten thousand dollars.
It's ten thousand dollars or ten years.
Or ten years.
Or more, or more in, of useful life.
Our general fund's only one year. So I just want to make that out, that we're kind of going against those rules, so.
There's no rule for, there, that's.
Well, and technically, the CIP is only one year. We make a projection to show a plan as a city, but we're not empowered to, to bind future councils to that spending. So what we're doing is year by year, we actually have to approve that, that we are going to accept the plan, more or less. And, and annually, we do get adjustments to what those revenues are actually gonna be. This was a good year. We got extra money to spend. And so telling you, we're gonna spend some extra money.
As long as it's one year. Thank you. Questions?
Sure. And just for clarification, we're looking at twenty eighteen being six hundred thousand, not, okay. And, yeah, and actually, for all the five years that we're projecting here, it's actually taking less money out of the CIP to put back to the general fund than was originally adopted in this CIP whenever that was a few months back. And that, that must be the February meeting that you're talking about? Okay, yeah.
And, and Counsel, we'll, I'll be changing the usual procedure for the full budget process. Instead of just bringing it to the council in the first meeting of September, I'll actually be presenting first informally to the Finance Committee in August, right? We agreed August?
Yeah, we're gonna do a, just like an FYI to the Finance Committee, August tenth, fourth thirty. And the, the budget never goes through our Finance Committee first. It's statutorily, it's set up that it goes directly to council from mayor. And it was many, many, many years ago, actually decades ago, that it funneled through the Finance Committee as part of a, or, or part of a committee called the Board of Estimates. Does anybody, I don't think there were any counselors that are currently here that were around then. It was a very different process, so. But the, the whole point of bringing it to Finance Committee is just to have the committee up to speed, give them a heads up before it actually gets rolled out to the full council and the public.
Further questions?
Mayor.
Counsel Olson.
I have a question, maybe Gene for you. On the oil pipeline terminal tax, the correspondence reads that the source of the funding has grown over four million annually and historically been used for projects within CIP with a portion being transferred to City's Economic Development Fund. Why are we given, is that staying the same or is that being altered as well with the change to what you want to do to the, to the general fund, this change to the general fund?
Counselor, if the, if the question is, does it change what we're transferring to the Economic Development Fund or what we had planned to transfer there? The answer is no, that's the same. We anticipate sending five hundred thousand dollars of the total to the Economic Development Fund as we have for the last number of years.
How much, Gene?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
Correct.
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, but I just, I want to make a comment on this. I can't support this. I've been hanging my hat on for years saying I don't, I don't believe we should be Robin Peter to pay Paul. And I think we're doing the same here. Just my observation and my feelings on it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
I guess to kind of piggyback on what they're saying, if we're, if we are needing to take from the oil pipeline terminal tax to basically balance our budget, what are we doing behind the scenes to try and correct this ship? That it looks like we're gonna need four hundred thousand this year, eight hundred thousand next, million dollars the next, and there's, it compounds on itself, and it gets worse and worse and worse the further we go down. So I guess behind the scenes, what are we doing to right the ship now? Because if you said we've got extra money to spend, we're gonna spend it, wouldn't the logical thing to do instead of, we've got extra money to spend, let's spend it, wouldn't the logical thing to do would be to balance the budget first without having to rob from the oil pipeline terminal tax?
The money I was referring to was the increase in the oil pipeline terminal tax. The, and so specifically, in terms of investing more in the, in the CIP. But if your question is, what are we doing to make sure that the budget balances on its own without revenue from the pipeline terminal tax? First, I'd say it's not an entirely relevant question because we have multiple sources of revenue within the City of Superior, including the pipeline terminal tax. So I think it is, I think it is relevant to consider using that for annual needs. We do receive that annually. But it's fair to say, you know, it may not be there forever, and our true source of revenue is is still growth and development within the community. So it's a longer report that I can certainly prepare for you about what we're doing to make sure that the budget is able to balance itself, that our growth within the community is able to cover the increases that we expect to happen in, in community services. It's a perfectly fair question that will be part of the budget presentation.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Counselor Bender?
Aye.
Counselor Sweeney is excused. Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counsel, I'm sorry. I had two Fennessys on this one. Counselor Elm? Counselor Ludwig? Counselor Sutherland? Counselor Kern?
No.
Counselor Dahlbeck?
No.
Counselor Olson?
No.
Counselor Van Sickle? That fails.
The motion fails.
Item nine point one has been resolved. Item nine point two is business by the mayor. The mayor is appointing Donna Burgum to the Civil Service Commission, appointing Sherri Freeman and John Vaske to the Liability Claims Committee, reappointing Susan Rank to the Housing Authority Board of Directors, and appointing Jane Acklem to the Urban Forestry Tree Board.
There is a motion by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion carries. Thank you.
Item twelve point one is an ordinance introduced by the Public, oh, I'm sorry.
Terry, if I could.
Business by Counselor, Counselor Fennessy.
Last meeting, we just had a short discussion about the procedure for removing standing committee, recommendations to the agenda, and I was just looking for an update and hopefully have a little bit of a dialogue about that. Frog? Because at the last meeting, we asked Frog for an update.
So if this is in reference to the Bike Station issue that was voted on just moments ago?
It was actually the whole, the whole Finance Committee packet going to the city clerk, and then only the one item making it all the way through is what this is in reference to.
So the one item that was acted on at the July eighteenth council meeting that was a recommendation from the July thirteenth Finance Committee meeting was the lease with Sailboats, Inc.
Yep.
That was expedited, rushed, whatever term you want to use because representatives from Sailboats, Inc. were available to be here at the meeting on the eighteenth, but were not going to be available to be here for the meeting tonight. So the natural order of things, or the natural progression of things with the balance of those Finance Committee minutes coming from the July thirteenth meeting would have been August first. So if you're asking me what new procedures or what new revelations have evolved since we spoke about this on July the eighteenth, nothing.
Okay. Well, I guess let me, let me break it down a little bit more, and maybe we can have a broader dialogue on it. The, because what happened was on Thursday, the Finance Committee met. On Friday, it was, they were asked to expedite the Sailboats, Inc. And there was nine items that were sent to the city clerk Friday morning for, to go to the council floor to vote. City clerk drafted up an amended agenda, including those nine items, for the council to vote on. Under the direction of Mayor Payne, it was sent back to Finance to remove eight of those items, allowing eight of them to be scratched off of the agenda. Finance doing what they were asked, resubmitted only one of those nine to the city clerk. Eight of nine of those, eight out of the nine didn't hit the council floor in the timeframe they were intended to by the Finance Department. So I guess basically what happened is eight of those were, in a sense, referred to today's meeting. What I'm looking for clarification on is, does the mayor, council president, council vice president, or really any council member for that matter, have the authority to refer, hold back, or eliminate any items from hitting the council floor? It's my understanding that the referring, tabling, or holding these items in place happens on the council floor, not behind closed doors. And so I guess I would like some clarification as to who has the authority, if anyone, to pull things off an agenda that were intended to hit the council floor for the next meeting.
So it's typical, I believe, and I don't catch all of our committee meetings, but particularly for the Finance Committee, I believe it's typical that if they're holding a Finance Committee meeting late on a Thursday, and the agenda was set by the city clerk and furthermore, sent to the media for publication on Wednesday, then whatever actions take place on the following Thursday, the following day, rather, wouldn't catch up with the, with the council until the second meeting beyond that, the second council meeting beyond that. This notion of closed doors and power struggles and everything else, I'm not, I can't speak to that. I wasn't a witness to that, and I can't help you navigate that issue, unfortunately. If the distrust in this room is such that the fear is the agendas are being manipulated, yeah, we're gonna have to figure something out. I don't find anything from a legal standpoint or from a procedural standpoint, from a Roberts Rule standpoint, or even from an ethical standpoint that speaks one way or the other to whether something naughty was done on, between the thirteenth of July and today, when we're contemplating the balance of that Finance Committee action. So if we want a rule or a habit wherein if one thing is expedited, all of the other things that were contemplated by that committee have to catch up with that, someone should articulate that, and staff can try their best to do that, I'm guessing. If the goal is instead to have some discretion in terms of expediting those things that we want to fast track, be it because it's a project and it's time-sensitive, and we want to pour some concrete between now and three weeks from now when it's likely to be colder, or what have you, then I think we've always had the discretion to flex those muscles, expedite that, get it in front of the council in a bigger hurry than it otherwise may ordinarily have gotten there, and still satisfy all of the notice requirements to the public. I know this is giving you a lot of angst. We've talked about it on the phone repeatedly. There's not an authority that you're gonna find in Roberts Rules or in the League Manual. I think, I don't think anyway, and if there is, I'm happy to be wrong, that's going to bring you much satisfaction on this. I think we have to count on our people, elected and staffers, doing our jobs honorably and getting these things moving down the line. Should everything else that was contemplated by the Finance Committee on July the thirteenth have caught up with the Sailboats, Inc. lease and been processed and before the council on the eighteenth of July? I don't know. I don't think there would have been anything wrong with that. However, if Acme Company would have had business before the Finance Committee on July the thirteenth, and Acme Company has had, has done business with the city before, and they know the general progression of things, and come July eighteenth, nineteenth, or twentieth, they realize, or, sorry, come July fourteenth, fifteenth, or sixteenth, they now realize that instead of their business matter coming before you on the first of August is going to be expedited because Sailboats, Inc. was going to be on, to the eighteenth, and now they are out of town on a date when they thought they would otherwise be here, then maybe we've done more harm than good. But those are all issues that I don't think are gonna be answered from a statute or an ordinance that we can read.
And I think, I think maybe we're missing the point here. I don't have an issue whatsoever of the items being expedited. What I take issue with is nine items were sent to the city clerk and to be voted on by the council at the next meeting. They were sent to the city clerk in more than enough time for the, for the publication notice, it's twenty-four, forty-eight hours, whatever it is. They should have got to the council. What happened is basically they were referred to the next one by the mayor. They were never allowed to come to the council to vote. And I guess I take issue with that. That they were pulled off of the agenda before we had an opportunity to, to vote on them. If the, the whole concept was for them to be referred to the next meeting, that should happen in open, on the council floor, not in the city clerk or the mayor's office. And maybe I'm the only one with an issue here, but, but I, this just doesn't pass the sniff test for me. I think it sets a dangerous precedent if we allow the mayor, any city staff, the city counselor to pull things off the agenda before they get submitted to the council to vote. I think it sets an incredibly dangerous precedent.
So let me speak, Counselor Fennessy, to some of your concerns. Let me explain first what I intended and then answer some of your procedural questions. So my intention, I noticed two actionable items on the Finance Committee. One that needed to be expedited, as we have explained, namely the Marina lease, where, which had been considered for several months at this point, and where we had spoken with the principal parties there that expected some timely action on that. So we moved that forward. Now, you're asking why the rest were pulled back. The reason for that, one, it is not the general expectation that minutes from the Finance Committee would have appeared on that next meeting, as the city attorney has explained. As he's explained, the common practice is that they would have been referred to the following meeting. That was, so I, so I took action to make sure that, one, the common practice was kept because there were actionable items still on there that most of the public would have had a right to expect would be considered at a later date. Speaking to the procedure, it is enumerated in the, in the League Manual that the agenda is controlled by the mayor, or specifically by the chair of the meeting. That is to make sure that the meeting is conducted in a timely way that respects the interests of the public. So I, this is common, maybe not in the City of Superior, but it's certainly common throughout the state of Wisconsin, to control the agenda in such a way that benefits the public. Now, you are correct that the council does have the authority to change the way or to set the way in which business comes before it. But it has that authority taken as a body. If you're interested in seeing things come at a certain date, you can take that action if it receives a majority, then it will always take that, then it will always come at that certain date. I do not have the power then to remove it. I was simply keeping with common practice and, and serving the interests of the public, as they would have expected to come. The Marina, the members of the Marina expected to see their lease on the July eighteenth meeting. The rest of the business, the public had every right, including the issue of Zagster, to see that at this meeting. So the, as far as I'm concerned, the actions were perfectly appropriate, but there's no question that they were legal.
So to sum it up, what we're, what we're gonna settle on is that the mayor has the ability to control the agenda and pull things off for whatever, whatever. I don't, I don't think your, your intention was, was ill. But the fact is, I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by saying, well, he had a good reason to do it, so it's okay to do it. I, I, it really just doesn't sit, sit well with me. I don't care what the reason for it is. I don't care that, that you thought that one should have got to the council instead of the other one. The fact is, you prevented nine items from hitting this council floor, and I have an issue with that.
We need to move on from this discussion, but I do want to say, we are not setting that precedent. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities is setting that precedent, as well as Roberts Rules of Order. That is, that is common practice in, in normal meeting procedure that the chair sets the agenda. That is, that is articulated. It is a common practice. Counselor Sutherland?
I think both of you going back and forth have pretty much answered some of my questions, or he said what I wanted to say. I guess with this whole Zagster thing, it did rub me the wrong way too, how I went from Finance and missed the Tuesday's meeting. But my question is, I'm just gonna ask a question here. When you came up with the Zagster idea that was on a Thursday, was that at a Parks and Rec meeting? Is that when it was brought up? That didn't have a quorum that meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, was it, was that on the agenda for following Tuesday, for our city council meeting?
No, that followed its usual procedure forward.
Oh, it did?
That actually came as business by the mayor because it, when it didn't have a.
That's what I was just wondering by, but I just want to, I'm all about transparency, and I think we all know that. We all are, the new council does that. Now, we're amazing at transparency. And I want to voice my opinion that I didn't, I thought that would have been voted on last meeting, and we did have some key counselors missing from that meeting that were in support of it, and I thought maybe it was a little weird to me, and I would just like to voice my opinion on that, and that's all I gotta say.
I'll make a motion to allow a counselor to speak more than twice on any issue.
We, I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
People speak more than once.
I'll withdraw.
Counselor Van Sickle?
It sounds like there's been quite a bit of time and energy poured into this non-issue, and it's a basic scheduling practice that I don't think anybody should have expected to see it on Tuesday. To insinuate that something was planned or concocted by myself, any counselor, or this administration, I think is also a dangerous precedence, but thank you for that explanation. I also agree with Counselor Sutherland. Transparency is important, and I think you explained it well, especially regarding the, the no wrongdoing regarding the legal procedure or ethical aspects, so thank you for that.
Is there further business by counselors?
Item twelve point one is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee, amending the traffic code, permit parking, exceptions to permit parking.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second is by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say no? The motion carries.
Twelve point two is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee, amending the traffic code by adding no parking on even side of the street, at Winter Street, from the intersection of Banks Avenue and Winter Street, west for two hundred and thirty-five feet.
The motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion carries.
Item twelve point three is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee, amending the traffic code by adding stops at North Eighteenth Street and Maryland Avenue.
The motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say no? The motion carries.
Item twelve point four is an ordinance introduced by Stormwater and Administrative Manager Diane Nelson, amending chapter thirty-four Construction Code, Long-Term Stormwater Management in each respective administrative section.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, who made the second? Counselor Dahlbeck made the second. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion carries.
Is there any business by public? No?
Seen, having no further business, the council is adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.